Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the June 6th meeting of the Common Council's order. I will ask our clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Alderperson Roat.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barzak.
Here.
Chapleski.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Probst.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Ten present, unexcused.
We have a quorum. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Roat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have five items before us for public hearing this evening. There was a request by our planning department to take items one and two together, so I will ask our clerk to read those out.
A hearing on the ordinance to amend the official West Dallas zoning map by creating a PDD-1 planned development district residential overlay on properties currently located at 1480 through 1488 South 84th Street, 1515 South 83rd Street, 82* West Orchard Street, 15* South 83rd Street, 1525 through 1527 South 83rd Street, 1529 through 1531 South 83rd Street, 1533 through 1535 South 83rd Street, and their respective rights of way, and a hearing on the special use permit for Element 84, a proposed multifamily and mixed-use development to be located at 8426 West Orchard Street, and 1470 through 1482 South 84th Street, proposed addresses for properties currently located at 1470 through 1488 South 84th Street, 1515 South 83rd Street, 82* West Orchard Street, 15* South 83rd Street, 1525 through 1527 South 83rd Street, 1529 through 1531 South 83rd Street, 1533 through 1535 South 83rd Street, 1502 South 83rd Street, and 15* South 83rd Street.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor.
Auctioneer.
Good evening. The first two hearings are rezoning of planned development district overlay and a special use permit for Ogden and Company, who's proposing Element 84. It's going to be a multifamily and mixed-use development at 84th and Greenfield. It's within our 84th and Greenfield redevelopment corridor situated near the Hampton Inn and Suites nearby. What's prompted this hearing tonight is essentially that this was approved last year, and as such, we're back this year because there's been a changing configuration of the lots. The certified survey map, which has been submitted most recently, has changed the lot configuration to develop two buildings on one lot, which requires a planned development district overlay over the existing C3 zoning. The other part of it is going to be the consolidation of what we had previously last year, where two special uses, we're going to be consolidating those two special uses into one, and thereby just have one resolution. So those changes have prompted tonight's public hearing, but what you see is the same, essentially the same building that was presented to you last year, and the developer is here as well tonight, and they're eager to get started on this venture. So as Monica has read earlier, the number of addresses involved within this redevelopment area, a total of nine, nine lots in total in the 84th and Greenfield area. It also includes a small little existing parking lot at 83rd and Orchard. All of these properties are currently zoned C3 community commercial district, which currently would allow the multifamily and mixed-use redevelopment. But again, given that, the fact that there's going to be two buildings in one lot, given that reconfiguration of the CSM, that's the need for this PDD overlay. And the rezoning even with the PDD overlay would be consistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan. This next slide is just a, shows you the new lot configuration, three lots, going from nine to three lots, and then the planned development district overlay area, which would accommodate the two buildings on a one-lot area. And this is just sort of a, turned on its side here, the general site plan. These are the three lots, Lot 1, Lot 2, and Lot 3, and then you see the general over, you know, I guess the orientation of the buildings on Lot 1, which is a five-acre site roughly. As far as the special use hearing goes, this hearing number two, the, again, the zoning is C3. There's going to be a planned development district overlay. There's going to be a total of 203 multifamily units, and these are luxury apartments, market rate. There will also be a retail component within the development, about 3,100 square feet. And it's probably going to be a coffee-based or cafe-based type of use, something that's attractive to, as an amenity for residents, not only within the apartments, but within the area. It would be open to the public, and it would also feature outdoor dining. Sort of recapping, it's part of tax incremental financing district number 11, a total of four stories and a couple different views as shown here. The unit mix is essentially pretty close to the same as was presented last year, 203 units, 216 bedrooms, five studio apartments, 105 one-bedroom apartments, 25 one-bedrooms with dens, 57 two-bedrooms, and then 11 two-bedrooms with dens, and a total of 3,100 square feet of retail commercial in this building here. In terms of the parking, a total of 336 parking stalls are required as part of the use that's involved here, and that would be focused on the residential portion, and then the, another up to 20 parking stalls required for the retail component. Now, if it's a restaurant, it's going to require more parking stalls than it would if it was just a clothing store, for instance. So that's why the range between 10 and 20. We're anticipating it to be a food or cafe-type of base type of use, so we're basically saying it's going to be probably 20 parking stalls required for the retail part. So in total, about 337 spaces would be provided, of which 226 would be underground, 65 surface, and then another 46 across the street in this existing parking lot here on 83rd and Orchard. This is just a layout of the underground parking underneath each of the buildings. And this is the general overall site and landscaping plan. There's going to be a considerable amount of landscaping and site improvements taking place on this former factory site. The existing strip mall along 84th Street will also be demolished as part of this to make way for Building A here. The retail and outdoor dining area would be located right here. There will also be parking to service not only the retail, but other visitors and kind to the site. The outdoor dining, just a closer view of the outdoor dining area and the retail area. This is the side of the building where the retail would be located. It would feature a glass storefront, some business signage, and then the building is primarily brick, and there's some hardy plank siding, a lot of windows and other colored glass and accent features within the building, also features balconies. So Plan Commission has reviewed the planned development district as well as the special use on May 24th, and they've recommended approval. There have been no objections to date that we've received.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any comments or questions from the members of the Common Council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I just have a couple of comments. So all the amenities are staying from the original plan, the pool, I think there was like a dog washing area for the tenants, all that stuff, right, Steve?
That's correct.
Okay. And I just wanted to remark on something about this plan and the neighboring building. Once upon a time, before I was on this council, I would go to Plan Commission meetings for fun, and I remember when a building was being built over the custard, it's now the custard stand, and the east face of the custard stand faced the factory, and the property owner was like, "Well, faces a factory, I could just do a big blank brick wall." And staff said, "No, you're going to make the east side of this building look good," and the Plan Commission agreed. So now you realize that nothing lasts forever. The factory has obviously been gone, and now we have a beautiful building going in, and they're looking at the custard stand that looks very nice, instead of just what had been the cheapest thing that could have been going in at the time. So that's kind of a thank you to our staff for the job they've been doing for a long time here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any other comments or questions from the council members?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Ranky.
Steve, when do they anticipate the completion of this project?
We anticipate the closing on the properties, the developer to take control of the properties and close by October, October 15th, mid-October, and then you'd see a shovel in the ground shortly thereafter, once any conditions of approval have been satisfied. We're working with the developer on that, to that end right now, on the Plan Commission conditions of approval. So you'll see shovels in the ground this fall is what's anticipated.
I see. And then how long will the project take?
Approximately...
Do you anticipate, ballpark?
Approximately a year. I mean, a little bit, a little bit less, but yeah. The following year, you'd see grand opening.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Just one quick question for the Alderperson from the 5th District. Are you planning on moving into the 2nd District? Is that, should I be worried?
No, I have apartments in my own.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions on these items from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number one and number two, and I will ask our clerk to read public hearing number three, which I guarantee is much easier to read than the first two.
A hearing on the special use permit for Cousin Subs, a proposed sandwich shop with drive-through facilities, to be located at 6512 West Greenfield Avenue.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Cousin Subs is relocating from the West Dallas Town Center at 70th and Greenfield. They're within that large multi-tenant commercial area over there with Burlington Code Factory and other uses, and they're going to be moving out of there and into, onto a former, the former Alco Credit Union site at 65th and Greenfield. And the existing buildings on the site would be removed. It's about a 7,000-square-foot building and a detached drive-through canopy, which would be demolished to make way for the new site layout. The Greenfield Avenue is, just for reference here, in the center of the screen, 65th Street is over here on the right-hand side. So it's a corner lot, well, almost a corner lot. It does have frontage on both 65th Street as well as Greenfield Avenue. There is another tavern on the corner here. This is existing building, the former Alco Credit Union, which will be demolished, and the views of the proposed building. It's currently zoned manufacturing, M1 manufacturing. The Plan Commission has requested, and the developers agreed, to rezone it to C3 community commercial, consistent with the planned restaurants with, drive-throughs are permitted as special uses, and the proposed hours is stated here, generally from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., a little bit later on the weekends, but Sunday and during the week till 10:00 p.m. Parking will have a total of 32 parking spaces provided on the site, which is double what's required. There's also going to be a drive-through on the site, which is a little bit unique for Cousins, and not all of them have that, but this one will, and it's, the configuration is to have cars pull around the west side of the building, place their order on the north side of the building, and then pick up their order on the west side of the building. And if need be, there are two stalls here for waiting for your order, so they can address other people in the line. This is the proposed site plan that was submitted by the developer and Cousins, and Plan Commission recommendations included some additional amenities, including additional landscaping along the east side of the property and along the frontage of Greenfield, as well as on the northwest corner of the site, and relocating the dumpster a little bit further behind the building, so it wouldn't be visible through this drive-through corridor here. So these amenities green up the site a little bit, and there's also a pedestrian connection that was recommended by Plan Commission, as this is a very walkable neighborhood. Being on Greenfield Avenue, you've got several mixed-use and other multifamily developments within the area. So not all traffic to this site will be by car. We anticipate a lot of walk-up traffic, so we always want to keep our heads thinking of pedestrians and walkability and bicycles and all those nice things. The proposed architecture of the building features a combination of things, brick, corrugated metal siding, actually, two colors of brick, a darker gray and a lighter color, and then a cementitious form of wood siding, which will accent the front of the building. Also be architectural lighting around the building as well. There will be a small outdoor dining area outside of the building on the front, on the front side, as you can see here, limited number of tables, maybe three or four at most, but it's a nice gesture on the, along the Greenfield Avenue. So we've received one letter of concern to date with respect to drive-through volumes. The previous Alco Credit Union had a detached drive-through with, you know, speakers between the bankers as well as the tellers. Not unlike a drive-through, there'd be that same transaction or voice through the speaker system. Within the special use resolution, we've indicated that there will be volume controls on the speakers to lower the volume if it is a problem, if it becomes a problem. I don't anticipate it will. The nearest residence is roughly about 150 feet away. It's across the street, south of Greenfield, and then the other single-family homes are about 200 or so feet north and east. However, if volume is a problem, it can certainly be addressed with appropriate volume controls as referenced in our resolution this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any comments or questions from the council on this item? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the members of the audience on this Seeing none, we will close public hearing number three, and I will ask our clerk to read public hearing number four.
A hearing on the special use permit for an outdoor extension of premise at Fourth and Long, located at 8911 West National Avenue.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Fourth and Long Bar, currently at 89th and National and Beecher, and their proposal is to put up a pop-up style of patio, which would be seasonal in use in this general area. You can see, though, there's three frontages, basically, for this property, and the proposed look of the patio area would be enclosed within planters and a wood fenced surround. There'd be benches integrated in between each of the planters, as well as table seating within the confines of the outdoor patio area. They're going to be repainting the asphalt surface, so in the winter, in the off-season months, when it's not outdoor dining season, this space can be used, as it currently is, as a parking lot. In the nicer months, like now, it could be, become the outdoor patio area. So the surface of the pavement would be painted a unique color. There'd be about a total of six tables, 24 chairs. There would be an outdoor fire pit feature, similar to what we've seen at Capri and other locations in the city, as well as a TV mounted on the wall for brewer games or different sporting events, as this is a sports bar. The area is zoned C2, neighborhood commercial, and a special use is required for the outdoor extension of premise for outdoor dining. The area is roughly 515 square feet, and the hours of operation will be from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., essentially March through November. The equipment, when it's winter, will be stored elsewhere off-site and not on this property. Given some of the, one of the concerns we received from a property owner south of this area, there were some concerns with screening and landscaping, and they wanted a visual buffer between the patio area and the neighborhood to the south. So there will be a screened fence along the south side of the patio area, which faces Beecher Street. You can see that here in the background. It is, it's not completely opaque, but what's proposed here as an option is a lattice style of screening, which will help obscure views into the patio and help deaden some of the sound, as would some of the landscaping as well. There will be extra trash bins and sanitation also within this area, again, to limit the amount of trash and, you know, detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. We're trying to keep that on the minimal side and keep everyone happy, as this is a neighborhood use. So parking stalls, they have sufficient parking for the existing use, as well as the proposed addition. And there's been, one letter of concern received to date, Plan Commission has recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any comments or questions from the members of the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
The resident to the south had a couple of concerns, and they're being addressed in the special use resolution. One of them that the facility keep the doors closed during business hours so that the noise from the tavern doesn't filter out into the neighborhood, as is currently happens from time to time. And the tavern will also be required to pick up all the refuse in the neighborhood from the tavern, the bottles and cans that end up, and just general trash that end up on the lawns and immediate area, and they will be doing that on a daily basis. And the only other thing that they're requesting, Steve, you mentioned the lattice-type fence on Beecher. The neighbors are looking for something to help absorb noise better. I'm not sure that a lattice fence will do the trick to absorb the noise, and, you know, maybe, I don't know if a natural, I don't know if there's enough room to put trees in there, or some other type of sound-absorbing material on the inside of the fence so that we can help prevent the conversations that, you know, obviously take place in that type of a situation from filtering into the neighborhood.
Absolutely, and we'll work with the owner of the bar, owner Mike Lang. He's been very cooperative and willing to work with us, and we can take a look at some measures to keep the neighbors happy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman. Mayor Devine. Alderman Weigel.
Steve, I was just wondering about the seasonal nature of that. Was that, was that staff suggestion, or was that the business owner? Because I could imagine with the combination of global warming and a winter winning Packer season, there may be days well beyond November when they might want to use that, and I'm just wondering how that came to be like that.
It originally wanted to be a full-time deck, and there were some cost issues with that, where it was, you know, prohibitive, so it morphed into a, more of a seasonal style. And, I mean, certainly, I think within the resolution, you know, we've called out the general term of when it would be out there. I mean, it's...
I was just considering, maybe he might want to have, like, once in a while, Packer tailgate party out there or something, and I'm just wondering how that, if that could be facilitated somehow, if, I'm just thinking how, I don't know, the gentleman, I'm just thinking of, well, how a business owner might want to do that and take advantage of that. But I guess if the, you're saying the actual furniture will be stored off-site, it may not be worthwhile to bring it back for a one-off event or something, so.
Correct.
And if he's happy and we're happy, then everybody's happy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the members of the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Barzak.
Just, again, quickly, the hours that the patio is available, which I think is consistent throughout the city, correct?
10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., correct.
10:00 p.m., everybody's got to be off the patio, no drinks served, and that includes Friday nights, Saturday nights?
That includes, yep.
Sunday nights, if there is a Sunday night football or Monday night football.
Correct, right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Probst.
Mr. Scher, are they going to be able to use this spot outdoors for those customers that want to go outside and have a cigarette? Will this be an area that they can still congregate?
Yes.
I know that in a number of our places, our outdoor resident, our customers that go outside and have a cigarette, those conversations can sometimes carry themselves into the neighborhoods as well. So is this going to be an area that they can just go in and utilize?
This will.
No matter what time of the year it is?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number four, and I will ask our clerk to read public hearing number five.
A hearing on the special use permit for Ebenezer Child Care, a proposed child daycare facility to be located at 1126 through 1138 South 108th Street.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Ebenezer Child Care is going to take out my former bait shop, Bob's Bait, and they're proposing to locate a daycare within the lower floor of the existing building. The upper floor is occupied by La Grande Radio, so they're going to be combining the two lots into one parcel via certified survey map, demolishing the former bait store, and then adding an outdoor play area in place of the, on that north side of the existing building. And then the daycare itself will be on the lower level of the existing office building. The hours of operation are essentially daytime hours, morning at 6:00 a.m. through evening, about 7:00 p.m. The number of children, up to 88 kids, and that's going to be younger infants through, I believe, six to eight years of age, and then up to 15 staff will be on-site at one time. The existing pole sign's going to be removed as part of the, as part of the proposed special use. 38 parking stalls are required for the use, and 34 will be on-site, which includes alley-loaded stalls, which are also proposed as part of the development. This is a site plan. It may be hard to see the color here, but this red area represents the existing footprint of the building, and then the proposed play area is where the Bob's Bait store is currently, and that will be removed for the play area. Player will be fenced with an ornamental metal-style fence. There will also be surrounding landscaping to complement what's currently in front of the building. The front lawn area will be continued across over to the Bob's Bait site, and the landscaping will continue around the backside. There will be alley-loaded parking stalls behind the building, as well as a parking, existing parking area on the south side of the building, which is accessible from Highway 100. The existing driveway here will be closed, as proposed by the applicant. So Plan Commission has reviewed this and has approved, recommended approval, and there have been no objections to date.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Other comments or questions from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Barzak.
I think Alderman, me and myself are pretty excited to see this development and what they're proposing. But I think what we're more excited to see is that the Bob's Bait sign is going to go to good hands. That is just an iconic sign, and hopefully, I'm not going to see it on Craigslist, because that was a heavy topic of discussion at the Plan Commission meeting, was the Bob's Bait sign. So, thank you, and wish them all the luck. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, we will close public hearing number five. That was our last public hearing. We will move on to item E on our agenda, citizen participation. It's a chance for residents to address the council on matters of interest to them. We ask that you keep your comments to approximately five minutes, and we aim to keep this portion of the meeting to 30 minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening? If you could come up to the microphone and please sign in, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ray Molison. I already signed in, so first I want to thank Mayor Devine for responding to my emails. Really appreciate, and Mr. Vitale, too, for responding. But I wanted to talk a little bit about what's left of Roosevelt and the playground and the disrepair that it's in. I know I've already talked to the school board about it also, and I know there is a little conflict between, who's really responsible for what, and I know you guys are working on it with them, but I'd like to know when that's going to occur, if it will, and whose true responsibility is the maintenance of that area? Is it the city, or is it the school board?
We can't really have debate on this because of potential violation of open meetings records, so we can only listen, but I would say you could look at item 53 on tonight's agenda, which takes that up.
Okay.
So I could tell you it might be done in about 30 minutes.
Okay. Well, no matter who gets in it, because I'm also going to go to the school board and talk to them, too, is, is that area going to be taken care of by somebody? I mean, it's been neglected for a long time. What you're seeing there doesn't happen in a month, and the school board's saying, no, they take care of it, they do their part. But I live on that block, so I know. The sidewalks are never shoveled in the winter, because I walk my dog, so I know when that stuff is shoveled. The grass is never cut. I talked to other residents in the area, they've complained, too. Maybe the only reason why now they've cleaned it up, gotten rid of the dangers for kids tripping over things, is that I told them I was going to Channel 58, and I have talked to Amanda Porter, and I've given them all these pictures, too, so I'm hoping maybe it would be on TV, too, just to show some of the neglect, but I'd like that to be kept up. I've lived in that neighborhood now for about 50 years, so I just don't want it to be neglected, because the more you neglect it, the more other stuff is going to happen there. The more graffiti, the more other stuff you're just inviting, so I hope you take it seriously and take care of that part of the city, so. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Hi, my name is Diane Einicker. I'm the executive director of Downtown West Dallas Business Improvement District. And this past Sunday, we had this little event called West Dallas A la Carte. And I'm here just to thank everybody that rolled up their sleeves and helped us pull this event off. First, I want to start off with common council for giving us permission to run the event. Then the clerk's office for helping us with the permits and everything. The administration office for overseeing the Centennial Plaza activities. Alderperson Probst, Weigel, Barzak, and Ranki for volunteering at various sites. Engineering for helping us get the street closed. The health department for their help on making sure all the food vendors had everything in order. The fire department for filling the dunk tank, and I learned a little bit about fire safety in tents this time. The police department and the police reserves. Communications, the IT department, forestry, development, library, senior center, and any other city departments that came out, and I just forgot about them. Public Works for the barricades and the signage, and a special thanks to Paul Barwick and Tim Last. We had some issues, and they came through with their ideas, and everything worked out great. And then our volunteers, Epicost Church, Crosspoint Church, East Dallas Neighborhood Association, Celebrations Committee, our new friends, our old friends, and of course, my family. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
My name's Dave Stoffaker. I was up here at this podium at your last meeting two weeks ago, talking about the ordinance that was proposed around barring participation in closed-door meetings to people who may have pending litigation or threats of litigation against the city. And I saw the updated version of the ordinance that's on the agenda for later on in tonight's meeting, and I wanted to start by first saying thank you. One of my concerns that I had was that there were no provisions for limiting the scope of the, keeping people out of the meeting to just their issue. So the steps you've taken are great. They have moved us to a point where you cannot use this as a weapon to deny me, a citizen, my right to representation for matters that affect my neighborhood. The concern that I still have with the ordinance as it sits tonight, and in its current proposed form, is that it still prevents the person bringing the claim against the city from attending, but it does nothing to call out those against whom a claim may have been filed. So again, we're still in the position where an alderperson bringing a claim to the city is in a position of having to choose between his or her constituents and representing them properly, and seeking their own justice if something were to happen, you know, HR problem, or being mistreated in the course of their business or whatever. So I would encourage all of you to look again at the ordinance that's being proposed tonight, and really see what you can do to get it to a position where if people are going to be locked out of the room, it should be everyone involved in the issue, not just the person bringing the claim that's really blaming the victim and ostracizing them when they very well may have valid claims. So, thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
I first want to say that I agree with Dave in the changes in the ordinance. However, it's still not, it's still taking away our representation in matters that are important to us in our district. I noticed that no two aldermen in the same district are on the same committee, which means that issues that pertain to one issue, and for example, development, Marty doesn't represent us on the development committee, or... So in passing this ordinance, sorry, I'm not really good at this, I encourage you all to think about what if this was you? And I'd like to think that all of you ran for office and are sitting up there because you care about the city and the residents of your districts. I wrote things. And you probably don't think that you would ever find yourself in a position to bring a claim against the city for any reason. But if you were to ask Kathy a month or two ago, she probably would have never thought that she would have ever found herself in a position that she felt like she had to fight. And this is her fighting for her people, and I think she's the most awesome alderperson representatives could ever have, because she cares that much. So I just encourage all of you to think about that in thinking about passing this ordinance, that you're taking away the representation for the people of your district, and it could be you someday. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. We will move on to item F on your agendas. Our standing committee meetings will be happening during recess. Those room numbers are listed on page two of your agendas. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report. Just a few things I want to mention. I want to thank, I know Diane stood up here on behalf of the bid and thanked a lot of people on the city side, but I want to extend thanks to the bid from the city side on another outstanding festival with beautiful weather. It was a great time. I didn't get down there as early as I hoped to due to rain delays at a Little League baseball tournament, but it was well-attended and another great event. And I also want to thank all the city departments that were involved in making that happen. The party continues in West Alice this week. Tomorrow night, we are having the first of five food truck takeover events at the West Alice Farmers Market. There is information on the city's Facebook page and the city's website. They're going to have 10 to 15 food trucks tomorrow evening, as well as live music, games for the kids, and just a good chance to stop down and have something to eat and have a drink and hang out with your neighbors. And then the next night on Thursday is going to be the first annual, hopefully the first of many annual, curds and kegs events at the Farmers Market, which was coordinated by Mark Lutz, who's the owner of the West Alice Cheese and Sausage Shop. They are going to have several cheesemakers, I believe it's around 20 cheesemakers from around the state giving out samples. They're going to have several craft breweries, as well as a few distilleries giving out samples. Tickets are on sale. I think it's $10 in advance and $15 at the door, and that's Thursday evening at the Farmers Market. I want to back up and give thanks to all of those that helped put on the Memorial Day Parade, Brenda Schmidt, the Celebrations Committee, Alderman Roat with all of his work with the veterans, and Tanner Paul, post-commander Ray Pasberg. It was a very nice day, very nice parade, and a very moving ceremony. And lastly, I want to congratulate our development department on, they have won the Salute to Local Government Award from the Public Policy Forum in the category of public-private partnership for working with the community, the neighborhood, the whole health group, and Cardinal Capital Management for the redevelopment of the former Roosevelt School into a medical facility. So there's an award ceremony coming up in late June where they recognize great accomplishments from branches of local government. We haven't won one in quite a few years, so I'm glad to see another trophy for our case. Congratulations to the development department. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Barzak.
Just piggybacking a little bit on A la Carte. First of all, I'd like to thank the bid district for putting on just an incredible festival. It really, really is incredible. But I get the opportunity to help out at a beer tent, and I would, I have to thank the people that help out in that beer tent, because everybody that's there, we do not get paid, we do not keep the tips. It all goes back to the bid and to the Christmas parade, and it's a volunteer time. We have a gentleman, Al Maurerman. He used to work over at Miller Park. He worked the beer stand, so he had the West Alice beer license, and he would change the kegs out, because I have no clue. And so he couldn't make it this year. And Alderman Kathy Probst, she volunteered to jump in with the bartender's license. You must have a licensed bartender on the premises when you have a function like this. So Kathy volunteered her time this time, and I jumped up in a wagon one time. I didn't jump up, and I'm looking, and she's got these, I think they're half barrels or quarter barrels, and she's lifting them up over the top on one another. And then she hooked one up, and she took a shower, and it was, but she stayed in there a while, because she was so warm on the outside. She said, "This feels so good in here, I'm going to stay here a little bit." Well, she did a great job, and I want to thank you, Kathy, for your help on that one and stepping forward. And I also want to thank the rest of the beer tenders. Some of these last names might sound familiar. Greg Barzak, Suzie Barzak, Todd Barzak, Eric Barzak, and then Jeff Sickich, who is also on the school board. So I'd like to thank all of those, because we really, we hustle over there and we work pretty hard, but plenty of people, it's a lot of fun, we enjoy it. I think it's our, like, eighth or ninth year, I'm not even sure.
Tenth A la Carte.
Tenth year, tenth year. So we just had a lot of fun, and thank you for all those that volunteered. And again, Kathy, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Alderman Barzak. Any other reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Ranki.
I have to echo Alderman Barzak in your comment to Diane. Diane Einicker and Don Falk, they do a fantastic job on this. I don't know if all of you know, but we start preparing in January for A la Carte that takes place in June. Would you believe? It takes a lot of people and a lot of hard work, and those two families do a fantastic job. I have to commend them, along with all the volunteers. We put on a fantastic celebration for West Alice, and it made us very proud. There were thousands, I mean, thousands of people lining up at all the various restaurants, craft tables, Animal Avenue. It was just wonderful. So if you've never gone, please consider it next year, because we'll be planning again in January for this special occasion. It's a marvelous festival, and it puts West Alice on the map in a positive way. I also want to give extra thanks to Mark Lutz from the Cheese and Sausage Shop. Our mayor neglected to tell you that the Celebrations Committee made it possible to feed the 50 veterans that rode in the trolleys. And Mark Lutz did a wonderful job of putting together the lunchboxes for these veterans, along with a few things that we added. It was a marvelous, marvelous project, and the veterans were so, so very pleased and happy that they were honored in this special way. So I can't say enough about my committee. We handed out the lunchboxes as they exited the trolleys, and they all left with a smile on their face. Thank you, Mayor.
I think I just got busted by my own alderperson. Any other alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval in the minutes of the common council regular meeting of May 16, 2017.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman May. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving to item J, item's not referred to committee. I'll ask for a motion to place item seven on file and refer eight and nine to the city attorney.
So moved. Second.
Motion by May, second by Barzak. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item K, standing committee reports. Alderman Chaplasky.
I'll be reporting as out after the recess.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by alderperson Ranki. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.